This is B, could you call a roll please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Guck.
Here.
Mr. Parrish.
Here.
Mr. Henning.
Here.
Mr. Wilkerson.
Here.
Mrs. Towers.
Here.
Mr. Cropper.
That's the quorum, uh, let's all please stand for the flag.
The flag. The United States of America. And to your Republic for whose stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every and just for all.
Any agenda changes?
Yep.
Okay, this time I'd like to thank the public for coming in tonight, also at this time, if anybody wants to address the board's any comments, you can do it at this time. Okay, if not, uh, we will move to the consent agenda, everybody's had a chance to go over it. Pardon me? Everybody's had a chance to go over the consent agenda, does anybody have any questions, corrections, or additions to the consent agenda? If not, any, a motion to approve. So, Mr. Parrish, second by Mr. Henning, we'll start the, uh, voting off tonight with Mrs. Towers.
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Uh, committee reports, they've done at this time, Mr. Wilkerson, student members report.
Alright, so academically, we're wrapping up our second semester and therefore the 2016-2017 school year. I know everyone's pretty excited for that, seniors have three Mondays left until our last day, for most of us who are going to be except for finals, um, which our last day will be May 12th, um, and then the last day for most other students will be Thursday, May 25th, I believe. Uh, but at this time, with the spring rolling around and the school year wrapping up, many students are being recognized for their academic accomplishments. Uh, the Wise team competed at the state competition yesterday, although there are no official results that have been released to the public, I do know that we had three students medal, Brett Harris in biology and English, Cody Powers in engineering graphics, and Alex Borowski in physics. And then, the TrigStar competition happened as well this week at the school, and Aida Abseparova, who's our exchange student, ended up winning the competition, that is sponsored by Root Tasking Associates, um, and then the winner of that wins fifty dollars. So, it's a pretty cool opportunity. Athletically, the boys and girls track teams continue to compete strongly, both teams won the Freeburg Invitational last week, and several meet records were set by FCHS athletes. On Tuesday, he and Albert tied the school record in the pole vault with a height of thirteen feet eight inches, the previous record was set in 2001 by Bobby Bailey, and then that was tied, and I'm sure he'll probably jump higher than that, so he's doing really well here. Uh, the boys will compete at Mascooda tomorrow, and the girls will compete at Sparta, the Buzz Bradle Invitational. Uh, the boys varsity baseball team will play at Bush Stadium on Sunday against Salem, uh, they played today at Westland, and they play, will play tomorrow, or Saturday, as well against Carrollton and Roxanne, in a triangle game at Roxanne. The boys junior varsity team will play today at Waterloo, and then the freshman baseball team will play against Jabo at home on Saturday. Girls softball team, varsity team will play tonight at Westland, and the junior varsity team will play tomorrow at New Athens, and then the girls soccer team, varsity team, and the JV team will play tomorrow at Greenville. Band had their spring concert last Tuesday night, uh, everyone I talked to said it went really well, I have a lot of friends at the band, so I heard it went really awesome, and now they're working to prepare for the pops concert, which is coming up soon. And then that's all I got for today.
Thank you, any questions for Mr. Wilkerson?
Is this your last, uh, last meeting, or do you have another?
June's my last.
Oh, never mind.
Okay, we're down to the principals' report.
Okay, uh, faculty here tonight, I have Mrs. Virginia Wykowski, who is in our research department, and Mrs. Julie Kozinski in our math department, and Mrs. Natalie Westbecker in the English department, and I think that's everybody here tonight. Awesome. Okay, uh, some more academic news, um, junior class took the SAT for the first time on April 5th, it went very, very smoothly, um, the students completed four hours and fifty minutes of testing, they were, uh, troopers, they worked hard, um, big thanks to Anne Minor, John Young, Michelle Etter, Billy Minn, and all the teachers that helped proctor that test. If you've never seen it, it's in the gym with tables all lined up, and it's very strict about how they have to sit, and when they can leave the table, and it's just filled with test takers, and they, the kids work really hard, so it's, it's a good day. Um, also, thanks to the Freeburg library, um, any student that needed accommodations, they took the test over there over a two-day period, so they opened up the other side for us even when the library was closed, and, and we proctored tests over there as well. So, uh, first time, we'll, we'll see how it goes. Freeburg High School fielded its first chemistry team to compete at Washington University for the first time this year, um, it's a big competition that they have, St. Luke Schools, schools from all of the Illinois area, um, Andy Morgan, our physics teacher, took the kids over there, the kids did well, it was a big eye-opening experience going against a lot of other kids in, in that field, and he looks forward to taking our kids and competing every year. Um, he mentioned the Wise academic information, um, again, unofficial results, that's awesome to have four kids medal in the state of Illinois, I have all those kids, and, um, from what I understand, unofficially finished 12th overall, so, um, congratulations to the Wise team. Mile U N, under the leadership of Mrs. Julie Tedford and Carl Florzik, competed at McHenry University on April the 11th, and got a shout-out to Sean Walsh, who won a Superior Award for that day as a competitor. Um, members of the art department competed in the chalk walk at Steelville High School on April 6th. The US history classes, led by Mr. Doug Zergel and Carl Florzik, have been working on the roaring twenties this semester, uh, in a few minutes, I'm going to be able to show you a couple of examples from their work, the students were able to choose any type of project they wanted to do, to, um, display anything from the twenties, so they went back and did old-fashioned newspapers and game boards, they could do digital, they could do artwork, and it was, you know, just giving the kids to take that, um, ownership of it by letting them choose the project to educate themselves, and the kids really did a great job, so I'm going to show you a few examples here in just a second. The, um, as Drew mentioned, the, um, music department, both the band and the chorus had their spring concert on Tuesday, was fantastic, um, the kids are going to be competing at the O'Fallon Band Concert Competition on this Friday, so they were playing songs for that competition, plus a few other ones, and I still have no idea how Maddie Lilly gets her voice up that high, but she sang a solo over the chorus, and it just blows me away every time. Bo, both groups were just absolutely phenomenal, it was, it was a great concert. Um, other FCHS news, the National Honor Society, led by Mr. Mark Miller, held its induction ceremony for new members on March 14th, uh, Mr. Tom Rage was the guest speaker, that's always a really nice night, too, and parents escort their, um, student up, and they light candles, and it's, it's, it's a really nice honor. Uh, the freshman open house was Wednesday, March 29th, it went great, um, very exciting night for, um, the teachers and the students to meet the new students coming in, and all those little freshman kids are just, you know, walking around, hanging out in groups together, not really sure if they should talk to people or not, or teachers, but, uh, a lot of excitement and a lot of buzz, there was extracurricular fare in the cafeteria, so the kids got to sign up and, and meet coaches, and meet sponsors, and start getting acclimated, so should be a good crop of freshmen coming in in August. Um, other than that, I think that's about all, oh, I got a couple more things. The drama club, under the direction of Mrs. Kara Harris, attended drama days, um, the students had a full day of drama practice, games, and activities, they are getting ready for the screenplay, which is titled Just Another High School Play, on Friday, April 28th, at 7:00 PM, and Sunday, April 30th, at 2:00 PM, and they hold that in the secondary gym. The honors banquet will be held this Monday, April 24th, if you can make it, that is one of the best nights at the high school, um, it's really a great experience to come in and see all of the things that our kids have accomplished, it's, every year, I, I am blown away by the students, their achievements, their scholarships, it's, it's really a great night if you can make it, it's absolutely fantastic. Um, the prom and post-prom will be May 6th, and this year it is held in St. of Glory. Mrs. Judy Ebers, Mrs. Brooke Place, and the post-prom parents have been incredibly busy preparing, and if you feel the need to come out at midnight, do a little chaperoning, watch some tug-of-war, watch them eat some of the really nasty things in the food thing, come on out, we'll take as many volunteers as, as we can get, but it's, it's a fun night, our kids really have a great time, and the prizes for that are just absolutely amazing, I would really like to have my name in it, too, but I understand, too old. Um, and then graduation is here, just about, Sunday, May 21st, 2:00 PM, uh, looking forward to it, it's been an absolutely fantastic senior class, I've really enjoyed them this year, and they've been outstanding. So, real quick, let me show you a couple of these projects. So, they could choose any type of, and I'm, I'm, I know you won't be able to read those back there, so if you do want to come up and see, um, they designed digitally, they did the pictures, they did the artwork, they went back and found information, I see Babe Ruth in that one, I need my glasses this close up, but there's one of them there. This is a murdering, murder mystery game board that one of the kids did. Uh, this one, they photographed it me from the wrong way, but they did a comic strip. Some of them did, um, Twitter using past history, we've got a Cowley Coolidge Twitter going on. Another roaring twenties, we've got more information on Babe Ruth, flappers causing a craze, um, Elizabeth Robinson Schwartz changes are having to be made, I mean, just all kinds of information, prohibition, anything they wanted to put into these projects. Okay, now, this ended up a little blurry, one of the kids did it in, but it was a group of girls from the class that got together and did a flapper routine. So they found some music, and they turned that in for their project. Here's another one, women finally get the right to vote, did prohibition start in the, why did it start in the first place? Uh, why automobiles were popular, the start of ice hockey. Some girl did a newsie, so she dressed herself up there. Here's another one, where they did another newspaper. Um, I've got, I'll show this to you in a second, it's on the floor, but some kids did an actual game board. Uh, here's another Twitter that they set up, Coco Chanel. More, uh, newspaper information. So the kids really put a lot of detail in it, uh, again, they could choose what they wanted to do, this one was for you, Mr. Fraking, to talk with Walt Disney.
At least you didn't say Alan Ball.
Uh, you know, next time. So, really, just a lot of great projects, and, um, Mr. Zergel and Mr. Florzik had a great time looking at all these things. Hopefully I can bring this one up, I had a little trouble earlier.
Hello, America, my name's Jared Fields, and welcome back to game number four of the 1921 World Series between the New York Giants and the New York Yankees. Today's game will be hosted at the Polo Grounds, again, the whole series will be hosted here since these two teams share the same country. It's a very nice field, but the weather is not so permitting, it's quite cold and windy on this October day, but for the Yankees, bad weather is the least of their worries. They are, in fact, up two games to one, but they just announced this morning that their star player, Babe Ruth, will be sitting out the rest of the series due to an infected elbow from sliding off the third, game three. Now, I bet the Giants are pretty happy with this, because that means the tide might be turning pretty sin in their favor. That said, we'll come right back to start the game.
So, you can turn the back on, Mr. Crunk. So they, they did a great job, and, um, again, anytime the kids, you know, have that choice to take some ownership of it, and, um, make their creations, and game boards, and, um, this one was, um, I have here, the US History 1920s Monopoly Edition, so they've got the pieces and some of their, uh, characters, instead of the car and all those things, we've got Albert Einstein, and Babe Ruth, and, um, I'm not sure where that one is, um, but anyway, oh, they put Mr. Zergel on there, too, I'm sure. It's a great picture, uh, Henry Ford, so, again, really neat, just sharing a little academics with you, so, that's what I got, thank you.
Any questions for Mrs. Young?
Ms. Young, do you know how long it will take for the SAT, uh, results to come out?
I do not, it's the first time, I would assume usually maybe somewhere between August and October.
Oh, wow.
Maybe a little sooner, because it's been a test, it's been administered before, it's hard to say whether it'd be in the first time. The kids might get their scores before that, I mean, I know they'll get them definitely, hopefully before college application time for early deadlines, so, we'll see.
Any other questions? Not, we're down to the superintendent's report.
Alright, uh, first up is legislative update, uh, the legislation is on their well-needed vacation, if they don't get it up, and, uh, so they are expected to come back next week, uh, the grant plan has, is officially dead, uh, but what has happened is the different, uh, legislatures have grabbed different pieces of the grant plan, are now running with it, and so, uh, there's a lot of things that are still, uh, coming through the pipe, pension reform, uh, tax caps, um, school funding model, that's all still, um, heavy, uh, one of the biggest things that's out there is the budget, um, one of the things I just received today from school districts is there's going to be a big push by school districts to try to put some pressure on legislation, uh, about, uh, posting things like they did a couple years ago, I guess it was last year, where the budget, uh, was not, uh, put out on time, uh, completed at all, except for education, uh, but try to put some pressure on them by public command, saying please, pass the budget. So, uh, session starts next week, what I was told yesterday, the meeting, expect things to happen fast, um, and then we'll kind of see how it all plays out, um, fingers crossed, the last we heard is that they are going to fully fund, uh, education at the 61-19 level, which is what they did this year for the first time in a long time, uh, they did also tell us that there are categorical payments that will probably not be made, uh, but that we think the transportation will be made now, and that could short us about a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, um, from this current year, so, uh, while that's a, uh, a big chunk of change, it's nowhere near as bad as what other school districts that rely a lot more heavily on those because of their free and reduced and their special education money, so, keep you updated.
Item D, new webpage.
New webpage, Mr. Nipper, Mr. Foster, and actually, Mr. Dance from next door have been working on it, uh, we do have a, uh, preliminary, uh, plan for it, it is a, I think it's kind of a pared-down, um, webpage, it's, it's going to be a lot more user-friendly, I, I was going to bring it up, and then I couldn't get on, but, uh, it, it's, it's going to be a very nice, uh, improvement to our webpage, and we're hoping it's going to be up, uh, sometime in the end of May, uh, early June, so that would be nice, and, uh, we can start using it this summer before next school year.
What about your conference update?
There is no update, there's been a couple meetings, but, uh, what appeared first to be possibly some interest by schools, either, uh, forming a new small school football conference, or, uh, possibly bringing in some larger, uh, football-type schools, uh, it's all just kind of fallen, uh, to the same old thing, so there's, really, there's no update right now, and if there is any, we'll, I'll keep you updated.
Item D, upcoming school board elections, seeing new board timeline.
Next, uh, Wednesday, the 26th, is our special board meeting, uh, the results, or we're supposed to get the results back by the county by the 25th, uh, we have to seat the new board by the 28th, which I think works out to be May 2nd, uh, so we have a short timeline, we were able to accommodate some folks and have that meeting on the 26th, uh, so there are, uh, a couple things that we, uh, will have to do during that meeting, uh, one of those is to canvas the results, uh, we'll have the new officers, our new board take their oath of office, uh, we will then elect, uh, officers for the board, uh, appoint district secretary and treasurer, and then, uh, approve the, um, dates for the rest of the board me, uh, board meetings for this school year and next calendar year, uh, so that's, uh, generally speaking, what happens at that meeting.
Any questions for Mr. Fraking on the superintendent's report? Okay, we'll move the whole business, uh, final calendar for 16-17 school year.
So we have, uh, historically, always come at this time of the year and ask you to, uh, approve an amended calendar, the final calendar for the year, uh, because of any missed school days, uh, there was, uh, we reported the wrong days, um, back in August, I guess, when we put the calendar together, and so actually, the calendar that's on the back of the handbook, and the one that's been published on the website, is, is actually the calendar we need to use because we had an extra day built in, so, uh, there really isn't a calendar to approve, our last student attendance day is scheduled to be Wednesday, May 24th, uh, with the teacher institute day is Thursday, May 25th, um, and then we'll have final exams Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday of that week, uh, we have spoken with Mrs., uh, Dean Kabak at the grade school, we're going to have two PM dismissals for those days, it'll be very similar to what we did last year, uh, but there isn't a need to, um, finalize or, or change the calendar because we still have the last date that's currently going to be published.
Any questions? Item B, kitchen management.
Um, I sent this away early April, um, at that time, it was called an RFP, since then, I've been told it's an IFB, sounds like something the state would do, just change initials, but it's a, it's a, uh, the process is, uh, been put in place, the initial submission has been, was sent back with about ten, uh, errors in it, which, from my understanding, is pretty common, those have been fixed, they've been resubmitted, um, I've made calls into the ISBE yesterday, today have not gotten anything back on where we stand on the, uh, update for the approval for this, um, so it looks like, um, we will probably have to put this on the agenda for the, for next week's meeting, for approval for the ISBE for the kitchen management, uh, in order to get, uh, the timeline is listed, um, in the information that I sent to you, uh, we would like to advertise this by May 4th, uh, with the pre-bid meeting May 18th, uh, bids being due June 13th with the final board approval at the June meeting, which I believe is scheduled on June 22nd, so, um, luckily, we have the meeting next week, so hopefully the ISBE gets it approved, sends it back, and then we'll be ready to move forward, uh, and I believe that will be in, in time to have this all take place by August.
Okay, we need a motion to...
We don't need it.
We don't need the motion.
No, because we haven't, I haven't gotten back.
Item C, sidewalk project update.
This is the hurry-up-and-wait portion of the school board meeting, uh, sidewalk project was, uh, submitted to the Iwas, ISBE, the Iwas portion of that, uh, our architect from FGM, uh, put their information together, I clicked my buttons that I have to click, set that in, we're still waiting for the ROE to send back approval for the health, life, safety amendment, hoping that comes back, and maybe we'll be doing that, maybe this could be busy next week, but, uh, so that, it, I have nothing, uh, that I'm asking you guys to approve for the health, the sidewalk project as of today.
Questions, comments? Okay, if not, we're down to item D, second reading of the proposed handbook changes.
Ms. Crunk presented those changes last, uh, meeting, at the March meeting, uh, there have not been any changes since that, uh, so if any board members have questions about those proposed changes, uh, I was not going to have Ms. Crunk read through all, uh, however many there were, but, uh, if you have any questions, she'd be happy to answer them, but, uh, I, I think it's appropriate for us to approve the second reading of the 17-18 parent student handbook.
Okay, any questions? Somebody made, made a motion, I thought I heard, first by Mrs. Towers, second by Mr. Henning, those in favor say aye, those opposed say no, motion passes. Uh, new business, tax year 2016 tax levy.
So we can get a, um, a copy from the county that basically goes through our, let's see your packet, that goes through all of our levy to, uh, give us an opportunity to review the levy and, um, make any adjustments, we can't move it up, but we can lower it if we would like, uh, what I've done is I've given you a couple sheets, uh, the first one is going to look something like... Something like something. It has the breakdown of the tort expenses for... But what it did is it took all the tort expenses for last year, thank you, so it's attached before, I apologize, I thought I made a copy, um, it, it has all the items listed that's, that are in the risk management plan, and it has the percentages that each one can be paid from tort, so the fiscal, uh, year 15, I guess this is broken into two different pages, so the first page in the board report, uh, shows that, um, we actually could have charged, um, one million, three hundred ninety-five thousand, six hundred ninety-one dollars in tort, if we were able to charge all those expenses that were listed in the risk management plan, our levy was only for one million, uh, forty thousand, one hundred seventy-nine dollars, so, um, we could have charged more, so that was some of the genesis of trying to increase the tort, so if we go to this year, uh, the levy was for one, uh, million, three hundred fifty-seven thousand, four hundred forty-two dollars, when we anticipate, uh, our expenses for next year, um, this includes the expenses that we know, the expenses that we are guessing at, um, we know what the teacher salaries are going to be, we have a guess of what some of the other things are going to be, uh, but we're guessing this is going to come in at about, uh, one million, three hundred thirty-two thousand, four hundred thirty dollars, which is within about twenty-five thousand dollars of what we have levied for tort, so, uh, I know I was asked by a board member to put some more information together, so I did that. Give that to you. If there's any extra copies, we can throw them out there. But what I did was I, I put together, uh, or I asked Diane to put together a spreadsheet on our Fund 10, uh, balances compared to the Fund 8 balances for this school year, and, uh, I think what I most important want to point out is, um, at the bottom, under the column that's listed as Ed Fund 10, uh, any balance has got a negative seven hundred eighteen thousand, nine hundred fifty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents. If we were, if we did not raise the Ed Fund, I'm sorry, if we did not raise the tort, uh, and did not make the transfers that we had in our, uh, budget, this is what deficit we would have in the Ed Fund. Uh, if you look on the other column for the tort fund, um, we expect to have a balance at the end of June of seven hundred ninety-three, uh, thousand, three hundred eighty-one dollars, that is going to then transfer over to the Ed Fund to pay those salaries and, um, risk management items that we can pay using the tort, um, so, if you look through, we're basically looking to, um, almost zero out what's going to be in the tort fund, so we're, we're not looking to carry, uh, any kind of balance, uh, we may have about a ten or fifteen thousand dollar balance in tort fund, but we are looking to, uh, balance out the Ed Fund, or come up with a positive balance, um, at the end of the fiscal year, uh, one of the things I think is important in the Ed Fund is to have some kind of cushion, uh, what that cushion is, is debatable, uh, but it would be good to have a cushion, I think we ended last year at, um, it's like twelve thousand dollars or fifteen thousand dollars in Ed Fund, uh, that's not much of a cushion, several hundred thousand dollars would be a lot better cushion, because most of our money comes out of the Ed Fund. In the budget, we were actually budgeted to transfer two hundred fifty thousand dollars out of buildings and maintenance, uh, two hundred thousand out of, uh, the transportation fund, and all of working cash, which is right about a hundred twenty-nine thousand. Because we raised the tort, because of some of the cost-cutting that we've done this year, we are hoping that we will not have to transfer those funds, and that we will be able to keep those, uh, balances in those funds, and only have to use the money from the tort. Uh, one other piece of information, it's at the bottom of that Fund 10 column, it talks about days of available cash on hand, so basically, this is how many days... So basically, this is how many days we think we could function if we got normal money from the state. And last year at this time, we had about a hundred and five days of cash on hand. So we could theoretically function for a hundred and five days. This year, we are at a hundred and twenty-two days. While that's not where we'd like to be, we'd like to have at least a year's worth, which would be about a hundred and eighty. We, we've made some improvements. I'm hoping we're gonna make some more improvements with some of the things that we've talked about that's actually in the different sheet. And so I think the increasing the levy in the TORT has been well worth it. I think next November and December, when it comes up again, I think we're gonna be, I don't, I don't, I don't wanna be quoted on this, but I, I think we're gonna be in a lot better shape. So I'm hoping that's gonna translate to be able to do something different with the levy. Hopefully, I didn't say up or down. So can't be held to that. But I'm hoping it's gonna be a positive. So we, we have made some changes and done some things, and I think, hopefully that's gonna be, put us in a better place. The last sheet, I'm just gonna go through. There's no voting that needs to be done on this, but I'll bring this in because I think it's also important. There's another attachment in your board packet. It's labeled fiscal year seventeen versus fiscal year eighteen salary benefit. What was that listed as? Attached to five? Attached to five. So what, what I did was, I say I did, what Diane did was put together all of these numbers for all of our employees. Administrators, teachers, cooks, aides, cafeteria, janitors. The only people that are on, are not on here are bus drivers. But we listed all of their salaries and benefits for this current year. What we anticipate their salary and benefits are gonna be for next year. What you'll see is blotted out, shaded out areas. So if they're shaded out, those jobs do not exist. And if they're shaded out for this year, those, you'll see those are some retirements and some changes in personnel. And so if you look at the second page down at the bottom, and this is just an estimate. I would love for this to come in exactly like this, but it'll be good news, but I don't know if we can keep it to that number. But I've anticipated that we're gonna be able to reduce our salary benefits by almost sixty-four thousand dollars for next year, which comes out to be about a reduction of one point four percent. Now, this also includes a teacher salary benefit, our teacher salary increase of almost around a three percent, and then an anticipated non-certified increase of about two percent. So, and those have been the increases they've received this year as well. So trying to look at worst-case scenario, I think we're gonna be in a lot better shape next year than we are this year, so. But I think the increase in the TORT has helped out tremendously. So going back to our original board item, I, I think our levy is, was appropriate, and my suggestion is we approve, sign off on that document. If anybody has any questions? Well, I jumped there. I don't know how to do it.
I guess I need a motion to approve the tax compensation report that's presented.
Actually, if we have a, just, my understanding then, Mr. Fraking, is that with the increase in the TORT fund and the percentages of all those expenses that have been paid, we've used, we've used, almost used completely the TORT increase as well as the education fund is being fully utilized also with, I mean, we have tens and twenty percents of different expenses coming out of traditional education funds, but even with that, our education fund is being almost fully utilized in our expenses.
I would say no, it's not being fully utilized. It is, there will be a balance in the Ed Fund, which is something that we probably need to, to have is a balance in the Ed Fund. As I said earlier, we probably would think about a, a year's worth of, overall, a year's worth of balance should be in there. So the Ed Fund should be a lot healthier than it is now. It's getting healthier. But there, it would, there will hopefully be, well, there has to be a positive balance required by law.
Sure, and in previous, we've, we've transferred some funds to, to ensure that. But you had mentioned, we started out at twelve thousand or something. Do you have an anticipated amount after this year's over, what, where we're gonna be, or?
I, I, I don't have an exact number. I'm thinking it's gonna be around a hundred thousand.
Okay, so better than?
Absolutely better.
Sure. And then the only other question I had was the, my understanding is that the, the came in a little higher than what we were anticipating.
It did.
And how is that going to affect our?
That, that will bring in more local money, but then what happens is once your local money comes in higher, then your state aid drops. So it, it, it won't be a one-to-one, but it will be a reduction in the, the state aid, but it will be increase in the local. So that, that will help us. So again, once all that comes in, I, I think, again, without giving hard numbers, I think we're gonna be able to do some things next year that we were not able to do this year as far as the levy.
Using the, the numbers of, of the increase for this year, it was three hundred thousand for the TORT levy that was increased previously. With that explanation, if we decided now to rescind that increase, three hundred thousand, then could you expect two hundred thousand deficit in the education fund to cover if we, if we took that action?
We, we would have to take money from either the building grounds, transportation, or working cash to cover those costs. Because we, we, we need that money to balance out the Ed Fund. If we don't have that money, we already budgeted to transfer money from those three funds. If we use the TORT like I'm suggesting, then we would not have to dip into those funds like we originally had budgeted, which is a positive. But we wanna do anything to the building.
If you're, in your opinion, are those funds overly, high, or is there more than sufficient funding in those funds?
No, no, there, there are not. And, but I also think there are some things that we need to do around here that we can use those funds for that, that we just haven't been doing because we're worried about moving forward.
Any other questions, comments? Now I'll take the motion. Close by Mr. Henning. Secondly, Mrs. Towers. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Item B, review of FY twenty seventeen budget.
I kinda did that, I think.
You did that already. That's all calculated in there.
Yeah.
So we're down to item C, approved letter of understanding.
Met with Smith and Grade School District, and they are interested, as we are, or as I am, into continuing our relationship and to sharing the GUS program. And so that has been accomplished by agreeing to this letter of understanding between the two districts as shared.
Questions, comments? Now I need a motion. Mr. McGrell, second by Mr. Hogg. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Okay, we're down to the den items.
Uh, none.
Okay, then at this time, before we go to the close session, I would like to thank Mrs. Towers, Mr. Crawford, Mr. Henning, for your many years of dedicated service to the FCHS Board of Education. Your work here has made the FCHS outstanding school that it is today, and again, I'd like to thank you for that. And I believe Mr. Towers and Mr. Henning both would like to make some comments before we do this. Okay, before we do that, Mr. Fraking has some.
I'd talk to you, Joe. I, I won't be able to match your. Uh, just as an appreciation from the district to the board members, we have a small little plaque. So if we do go to your house, I expect to see this up. Uh, but it says, "An appreciation of dedicated services to students and staff at Freeburg High School." Mr. Gary Henning, Mrs. Kim Towers, and Mr. Crawford, who is trying to beat the rain in the fields. Do I need to put this back in the bubble, right? Do you want yours? Thank you.
Mrs. Towers, if you would.
Gary, you there though?
You want me to go? It's up to you.
Safe beauty till last. First of all, I'd like to address not only the board but the public. I would like to thank everyone for their support over not only my eight years here, but also my thirty-three years of teaching. I always put Freeburg High School first. I always will put Freeburg High School first, and I plan on still helping out with golf tournaments and doing anything I can to support our program. I would like to welcome aboard Mike, Angie, I'll say Mrs. Garland, how's that? That's what, 'cause I knew her from the little girl all the way up, but I'm sure you guys will do the job. I've been through twelve principals and eight superintendents and many board members. And this school's what it is because of all the people that have been before us, before these people and everybody else. It takes time, and it's something that has built and progressed. And my hope is that this keeps building, and we stay here and move forward. And I believe, I know the board members we have here and the three new ones will continue to do that. And you have our support one hundred percent. As far as the board here, we've worked as a team. We've not agreed all the time. Kim, you, and Dean, you know, this is our last go-around, but for the administration and these people right here, they're the best. And we disagree, we do everything else, but I think we worked very well as a team and did what was best for the students, for the faculty, and everyone concerned and the citizens of Freeburg. Probably the last person I need to thank is, is all the secretaries, the cooks, the janitors for putting up with me for forty-one years, along with the faculty and, and of course, the administration and the teachers. But probably the biggest thanks I have to give, and I, I said that in the papers, my wife, she's put up with me. And the next eight years, you'll find the phones are ringing and everything else going on through all these times. And it's a matter of, it's a matter of personal pride and sacrifice and doing something good for the community and good for the schools to make this the safest and the best high school ever. So thanks Tammy for thirty-three years putting up with me, and thank all of you and everyone in this community. All I can say is we all support us. Go Midgets and keep it moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Henning.
Well, I have to read mine because there's no, I could get that all out. As I've been thinking about attending my last school board meeting, there are many thoughts that go through my mind. I have done some reflecting the last few months, knowing that my time on the board is coming to an end. I would like to say that I have truly enjoyed my sixteen years on this board. Thinking about and remembering all that has happened brings back both happy and sad times. I've had the opportunity to work with five superintendents, several administrators, board members, and faculty, of which some are now dear friends. I've had the pleasure of watching some of my own teachers retire, and every year have looked forward to graduation day. Getting to witness the young people of our community take the first steps into their future was always a very special day. I had the good fortune and honor of giving family, friends, my nieces, and both of our daughters their high school diploma, which was exceptionally special. I have been able to witness and be a part of many successful projects, such as the construction of an amazing athletic stadium, additions and improvements to our buildings, a new gym floor, and many other endeavors, one of which is our district becoming a leader of the Chromebook technology world. We have had the little people want to get rid of our Midget mascot, which for the record was not going to happen with or without our big meeting. The Midget mascot has been around for many years, and I do believe it is here to stay. We have experienced much success with many of our athletic teams and extracurricular activities, with some becoming state champions. Academically, our students have excelled. As a previous counselor at Freeburg Elementary, I've seen many young students enter our school system and grow into young adolescents. As a high school board member, I've seen these same students mature into young adults accomplishing many things along the way. Now, as I am out in the community, I see these same young men and women as adults starting their careers in families. It is very rewarding and a true honor to think that I have played a part in it, even if it was a very small part. Our district and community has suffered through the injuries and death of students from car accidents. We have watched one of our teachers go to prison for attempted murder, and most recently, we have endured the sudden death of our superintendent and friend, Mr. Andy Layman. I would be remiss if I didn't express that I will always believe that the contentious nature of this election and the actions of a few leading up to it took an unnecessary toll on Mr. Layman, and we will never know how those actions contributed to his untimely, premature death. Over the years, I have attended state conventions and learned many things that have taught me what it means to be a productive school board member and how to successfully work with the board to get done what needs to get done for the majority of the district students. It is important to learn how to listen and make educated decisions to decide what is in the best interest of this district. This is where the board needs to look to the superintendent and administration for guidance. These people are in the building every day and have a pulse for what is going on inside the halls of this high school. These are also the people that have what is in the best interest of our students in mind while making these decisions. We have all endured a long and contentious election. Now it's time to come together for the good of the school and its students. It's easy to talk about how to run a school, but now as board members, you have to do it. I wish the new board members the best of luck in this new position, and am hopeful that they will remember that being on a board is a team effort which takes everyone working together to make positive things happen. Serving on District Seventy-Seven's board has been a privilege and an opportunity that I will always be grateful for. I want to thank the administrators, teachers, and everyone who have been involved with this district for their hard work and dedication. I believe that I have been a part of a district that has done amazing things and one that has helped our young people build successful futures. It has been my pleasure and privilege to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. And at this time, we need a motion to go into the close session. Before I do that, I'd like to thank the public for being here tonight also. Now I'll take that. Mr. Henning.
Second.
Secondly, Mr. Perry. I'll start the voting with, all right. Motion passes. Thank you. I want it all.